Good evening. Welcome to the Beach Grove Common Council Meeting for February 5th, 2024. My name is James Coffin, Mayor for the City of Beach Grove. I will refer to the Clerk Treasurer for roll call.
I'm Samantha Stratton, Clerk Treasurer. In lieu of roll call, we will introduce ourselves starting on the right.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council District One.
Dan McMillan, Council Large.
Brian Mackens, Council District Two.
Chris Duffer, Council of Large.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Mike Hemmigan, District Three.
Brian McKenna, District Four.
Mike Ernest, District Five.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce Savannah Slinker, Beach Grove Middle School student. She's going to come in and lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I reached out to the Beach Grove City Schools earlier this year about having them provide a student each month to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Savannah Slinker just recently won the Spelling Bee Championship, correct? Very good, well, welcome. So if you guys want to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Savannah will get us started here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Savannah, we appreciate it. Up next is invocation. Pastor Bailey.
Good evening, Council members. Public, if you'd be so kind as to bag your head, please. Lord, our most loving Father in heaven, Lord, Lord, we pause in the middle of our events and our activities today, Lord, to invite you into all of these proceedings. Lord, we ask that you guide us with wisdom from above. Lord, protect us as we go our way, Lord, and help us to do the things that we need to do for this community that allow us to meet you one day, and you'll say, "Well done, my faithful child," in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Up next, I'd like to start with a moment of silence. Received some very unfortunate news over the weekend. Part-time employee Amy Hickey passed away. She's been employed with the City of Beach Grove at the police station since 2007. She is the wife of Detective Matt Hickey. Thoughts and prayers for their family as they work through this in our department. So ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Council, you have special presentations. Up first is Beach Grove City Schools' update for 2024. I'd like to invite Dr. Laura Hammack up to discuss what's going on with our schools.
Well, I'm super grateful to the mayor for this invitation, and I just wanted to take a moment, for those of you who don't know me, I am Laura Hammack, I'm your school superintendent. I've been superintendent of Beach Grove Schools, this is now my third year. But I was fortunate enough to serve as an assistant superintendent for seven years prior to that, and took a little sabbatical down in Brown County where I was superintendent for five years. So it is a gift to be home here in Beach Grove, and we have a lot to celebrate. And Savannah is just one of the many students tonight that you will get to celebrate with us. Savannah did win the Beach Grove Middle School Spelling Bee, and she won with the word "tunic." So, you know, not the easiest when you're under pressure. So congratulations to Savannah. And we have some other wonderful students who will be celebrated this evening as well. But I just wanted to take a moment and just share with the council and our community that the schools are doing extraordinarily well. We have the most extraordinary students and the most incredible staff that is leading the way for our students every day. I thought that the council might be interested in hearing a little bit about our learning prioritization plan. We've, quite candidly, we're a little concerned about where our students are performing as compared with other Marion County school districts, and then, of course, as compared with school districts around our region and the state. And our school board has really asked that we return Beach Grove to a space where, when compared with our Marion County colleagues, that we are performing in the top three of the 11 counties that are here in Marion County. And we're not right now. So we are pretty much at about fifth or sixth place when we look at where we are performing as compared with our colleagues. So we wanted to not just sort of say that we wanted to get back into top three, we needed to change things in order to get that done. And so we're in the process of executing our learning prioritization plan. That is a strategic plan that has been divided out into three specific areas, one being a profound focus on the science of reading. You might have heard about that a little bit, being talked about quite a bit down at the General Assembly right now. And it is a re, sort of another way to look at reading instruction. But I just turned 50, and so when I was raised during the 70s and the 80s, it's exactly how we were taught to read. So it's phonics, and it's kind of old-school, traditional reading instruction, and surprise, surprise, it works, right? So we are thrilled that this year we are rolling out the science of reading. So we are ahead of legislation, which we are really happy about. There is a, WTHR did a beautiful story just this last weekend about Hornet Park Elementary School and the work that's being done in partnership with the University of Indianapolis. So it's been really lovely to get to collaborate with some of our local university partners in order to get this happening. And I'm really pleased to share with you that it's not just a feel-good story. When we compare our middle-of-year data with years prior, this year, it's blowing any performance out of the water. So our students are coming to school a little behind, but this work is getting them to where they need to be. So in a few years' time, I'm going to be super proud to come back to this council and share that Beach Grove City Schools is performing in that first, second, or third spot as compared with Marion County colleagues. So just wanted you to know that this work is happening, it's quite strategic, and we do expect profound results at the end of this execution. So really appreciate our school board's support of that plan, and I'd be happy to come back anytime to report on that progress. I just had another piece that I wanted to share tonight, I know that your time is limited. But we unfortunately, in the schools, just over the last month, have had several different security situations where we have really needed to rely on our community for that ability to kind of execute our safety plan. And I just wanted to take this moment, I know that we have officers in the audience, and just thank our Beach Grove Police Department publicly. The response from our Beach Grove Police Department, nothing short of extraordinary, and has allowed for our community and our schools to be safe, and truly to affirm the fact that our safety plans are working, right? We hate that they have to be tested, but all of the time and effort that's been put into them with great partners in our Beach Grove Police Department, I'm just so grateful and truly honored for, just to have the gift to get to lead this school district in partnership with community partners, because we alone can't make this work, right? It's because of the incredible partnerships that we have in this very special community that make events like we've had to go through that much better. So I'm just grateful to you all for your leadership, grateful to our community partners, and just so grateful to be your superintendent. So mayor said that I could come anytime and kind of update you all, well, maybe not every time, but he said I could come from time to time and update you on things that are happening in the schools. I am so honored to do that. If that is something that is interesting for you, we can set up some sort of cycle to make that happen. But thank you for your service to our community, and we just really look forward to working with you into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. I'm excited for the collaboration and for us to continue to build on that, that we've worked on in the last several years, to truly make Beach Grove the best place to live and to learn. So I'm excited for that, so thank you for coming here. With that, I have a couple more special presentations with our schools. Up first is Beach Grove Girls Wrestling. I'd like to introduce Coach Ryan Williams, who will introduce a couple female wrestlers that we have here, so.
Hi, my name's Ryan Williams. I'm a Beach Grove graduate of 2000, a long time ago. Wanted to quickly talk about our wrestling program. Our wrestling program in Beach Grove is pretty historic in the state of Indiana, but this year, we were able to do something just a little bit different. We put a feelers out last year, had a few girls want to decide to try girls wrestling. It's a new emerging sport by the IHSA. Next year, it's going to be sanctioned from what they've said, which is really exciting. Last year, like I said, we had four young ladies compete in the wrestling team. This year, I was lucky enough to letter 15 girls. The percentage right there is pretty exciting. With that, we finished top five to 10 in every single tournament that we competed in. We were one of the largest girls wrestling teams at every tournament that we went to, which is pretty exciting, being a school of 950-ish, to have 15 to 16 girls, but 15 finished the season. We took 10 girls to semi-state this year. 10 of them qualified for the semi-state tournament, and it was ran through the Indiana High School Girls Wrestling Association, which is going to be taken over by the IHSA next year, it's looking like it is. But with that, we had two girls advance to the state tournament, and they're with us tonight. You guys want to come up? We had freshman Anna McCarty, Anna wrestled in the 115-pound weight class. Anna probably led our team in wins this season. She had over 27 wins. I'm guessing 23 of them were all pins. She was, as a freshman, she had a lot of people with their eyes open. I remember one time the Southport coach, she watched her pin the girl that was ranked third in the state before, she ended up taking it over. His eyes were huge across the way. She qualified for the 115-pound spot at the state tournament. Unfortunately, we had the state runner-up the very first match, who was a senior from Ben Davis, that was very, very good. So that was the end of her season, but she's actually starting back training this week to go after some offseason tournaments and, you know, make sure that doesn't happen next year. We were very fortunate enough to have Senior Liberty Reeves come out this year. I found her in the cafeteria. She was just working full-time, 40 hours a week and going to school. She still did that all through the season. I like to brag on that because she's an unbelievable young lady. But she never missed a single practice all year, first-year wrestling, finished seventh in the state in the wrestling tournament. She started at a higher weight class, her body just kept shrinking, and she was able to get to the weight class below, and she finished, like I said, seventh in the state, never missed a practice. And we just found out today that she was actually a first-team academic all-state. She has a 3.808, and she's getting ready to graduate, so that's pretty impressive. So, and if you knew a little more about her, you would be more impressed, I'll tell you that. So it was just real exciting, and I'm glad to be here and celebrate these two. So.
Would you like to say anything? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Up next, Beach Grove Bowling, Donnie Sutton. Donnie, you want to come on up? I'm not sure if Coach Barnhart, is Coach here? Coach, come on up, sir.
Okay, sorry I was running late. Had a pretty busy day, but first of all, I was a wrestler in high school, so congratulations to you two young ladies. I know it's not easy, so congratulations, keep up the good work. So, but Donnie here, I've been coaching bowling for nine years, and I've had some pretty good bowlers in my coaching career, but I have not had any that have the talent and the knowledge that Donnie's got. So it's pretty sad this last year, buddy. Donnie has made, all of my years of coaching, the three years that I've had with Donnie have made it all worth it. So he, I don't know, he's like a second kid to me. And he won the semi-state two weeks ago in Fort Wayne, very solid performance, and we, I really think that it's time to finish it. So we have state on February 18th at Championship Lands in Anderson, and probably the best chance that anybody's got. So, Donnie, let's go get it, buddy.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Donnie, appreciate it. Best of luck on February 18th. Last special presentation this evening is a Beach Grove City Court update with Judge Andrew Wells.
Right, good evening, Council. Y'all should have a copy of my presentation, so we will flip through that. And I got to say, I feel like every time I come here, I got to follow some of the best presentations. I mean, we're learning about bowling state championships and wrestling state championships, and then I get to come up here and bore you with speeding tickets. Prepare to be riveted. All right, so I know we have a new council, and I think this might be, in the 13 times I've done this, this is probably the biggest change of council members that I've seen. So I'm going to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm sure you all know me, I think I've met everybody, but just to make sure we're all on the same page. My name is Andrew Wells, I'm the city court judge in Beach Grove. I was first elected in 2011. I went to IU Law School and Wabash College, and then my wife, Ashley, and six children, and we have lived in Beach Grove for 15 years. So that is a little bit about myself. I have been a lawyer for 15 years now, so, and then, like I said, the city court judge was elected in 2011. So we have seen a lot of things over the, now going on our 13th year at the court, and we continue to grow and are busier than we've ever been, and you've heard, some of you have heard some of that from last year's presentation. But if we turn to the first page of the presentation, I'll just kind of give you a little bit more background. And I changed the presentation up this year, so if you've had the misfortune of hearing my presentation in the past, we've got some new stuff. I thought it'd be helpful to kind of learn a little bit more about the background of the court and what we're actually doing. So the city court, I should say, city courts and town courts in Indiana can hear infractions, ordinance violations, misdemeanors, and civil proceedings. We, in Beach Grove, we mainly only handle infractions and ordinance violations. We have the authority for others, but currently are just doing infractions and ordinance violations. We have, city courts and town courts have concurrent jurisdiction with the circuit court for infractions and civil cases. So when you think about jurisdiction in the circuit court, basically a circuit is a county. So every county has a circuit court, and we have the same jurisdictions, basically boundaries, that the circuit court does. For ordinance violations, the city court, a city court needs an interlocal agreement in place to partner with another city or town. So under Indiana statute, a city or town can bring its ordinance violations to another city court if they don't have a court. And we have multiple, or, excuse me, multiple interlocal agreements in place with partner Marion County cities and towns, the list is there. So Claremont, Homecroft, Lawrence, Speedway, Southport, Williams Creek, those are agreements that the, this council in years past has entered into with those partnered cities and towns. So other agencies that file in our court are listed in this box, and I have them kind of separated out because they don't have interlocal agreements, or they don't, or they can't have one. So it's Cumberland, Decatur Township, Franklin Township, Perry Township, and Washington Township Schools, all those school departments have police departments. So all of these agencies here, and including Ascension St. Vincent Hospital, they are only writing infractions, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second. But those, so there's no interlocal agreement there, those agencies in the box are just filing infractions in the Beach Grove City Court. So if you turn your, to the next page, I've got a chart here, and when you hear about our court, you're going to hear two things, and I've said these both multiple times, infractions and ordinance violations. And there, you can have a speeding ticket, you can have a parking ticket, you can have multiple things under either one. So there's infraction speeding, there's ordinance violation speeding. So when you think of a distinction between the two, think, infraction is something on state code, so the state of Indiana has a law that's been violated, and so an infraction has been issued. And then an ordinance violation is something a city or town has in place. So that's something that a city council like yourself has passed. So an ordinance violation ticket would have been issued. So this first chart here is to break down ordinance violation, and it, ordinance violations can be complicated, so I thought this would be helpful. So when an ordinance violation is issued by a city agency, the first question, and if you're working on the very left-hand side of here, the first question you're going to ask is, is it a moving violation? So a moving violation is going to be speeding, disregarding a stop sign, things of that nature. If it's a moving violation, it goes directly to the court, okay? So it's filed directly in the court, court opens a case, we docket it, and start moving down the process. If it is not a moving violation, so dog at large, business license required, nuisance property, not mowing your grass, those are things that will be not moving violation. There's a lot of them, but those are just some examples. If it's not, it goes to the Ordnance Violations Bureau. So every city and town has an Ordnance Violations Bureau. If it's resolved in the Ordnance Violations Bureau, case closed. So that would be, they come in compliance, they pay the fine, you know, what have you, the city's satisfied, the town is satisfied, so the case is closed. If it's not resolved in the Ordnance Violations Bureau, after usually about 60 days, sometimes it's longer, it's then filed in court. So I've color-coded this, and you can see, red is the city function, green is a court function. And I have, sometimes I have people think that the judge runs the Ordnance Violations Bureau, which is not the case. That is a city function, and under statute, it runs up to the clerk treasurer technically, but most city and towns kind of have their police departments handle them. But if you read the statute, which I'm not telling you you should do that because it's lengthy, it flows up through the clerk treasurer. So it is a distinctly city function, the court is not running an Ordnance Violations Bureau. And the various cities and towns that use our court have ordinance violations bureaus, and when they've decided that it's reached that timeframe, or they're not getting responses from the individual, they'll then file it in court. So there you go, that's a lot, and I know it's a little convoluted for ordinance violations. Now, if we flip to the next page, the flow chart for state infractions is really difficult.
Andrew?
Yeah?
Is Ordnance Violation Bureau another name for compliance?
No, compliance department is separate, but compliance department's tickets would go to the Ordnance Violations Bureau. So yeah, you can kind of think of them as the same thing, because the compliance department is not going to be issuing the type of citation that goes directly to court. So it's working in tandem with the Ordnance Violations Bureau. That makes sense. And I should add, if you have a question anytime, just interrupt me, please. So in state code infractions, real simple, file directly in court immediately. That's how that works. All right, next slide, when we, when we get a case, when it's been docketed in the court, what happens? Defendant's going to have three options at that time. They could admit, they can deny, they can plead no contest. That's for all citations, no matter what it is. If it's a moving violation, they can also do a deferral agreement. If you admit you're going to pay a judgment, fines are set by state law or city or town ordinance, what have you. If you deny it, I'm going to docket it for a trial, and then we'll hear evidence, the prosecutor will put evidence on, the defendant will put evidence on, and then the case will either be proven, or it won't be proven. And as you can see, judgment goes when it's proven. If they plead no contest, that's basically, they're not going to admit, they're not going to deny, but they agree to pay the judgment. There's no monetary difference. If you get a judgment, it's going to be the same regardless of what path you went down. But those are the basic three options that you have. And then, like I said, a deferral agreement is an agreement between the prosecution and the defendant, and the defendant's going to pay a fee instead of a fine, it doesn't get reported as a judgment to the BMV. So you think of those as kind of like a pre-trial diversion type of thing for a speeding ticket. So deferrals, we see a lot of those, a lot of cases end in that way in our court. So if you go to the next slide, this is just the historic case filings, this is an update of, from 2011 until today. As you can see, we have a upward trend, the COVID year was a little bit of a dip, but we have come back and doubled since COVID. And I will say, usually, or in years past, I've done this presentation in January, but since it's February, I've got five weeks or so of data of what we filed this year, and we're, I know it's early, this can change, but we are on pace to be higher than 2023 with, with just four or five weeks in the book so far. If you go to the next page, this is just the overall number, some numbers I like to highlight on dispersments and other things. You'll see the total disbursement was just under $1 million for this year, so every dollar that comes into the court is dispersed out somewhere, it has a home by statute or ordinance. And the overall dollars that came in and exited the court in 2023 was just shy of $1 million there. There's some of the deferral breakdowns, I won't go over that too much. One highlight I always like to pull out, and we've got a chart in the back, the net to Beach Grove, so once you've sent money to the state, the county, and the various cities and towns, what dollars stayed in Beach Grove is 192,000, almost 193,000. So that was, I think, second all-time in our history, and I'll say, that all doesn't go to the general fund, there is some, most of it does, there's a few other funds within Beach Grove that it goes to as well. So that's total number that stays in Beach Grove. And then you'll see budget there, our budget last year was 144,000, we spent 132,000, so it's the 13th year in a row we've been under budget. If you go to the next slide, this is the total dispersments, the historic view, so you'll see that, 192,000, we were 100,000 over our last highest year. So positive trend there, and I'm expecting that's going to continue on the same, same pace that it has the last few years. Next slide is the historical view of the dollars to Beach Grove. So I already told you about the 192 for this year, so again, it kind of tracks the other dispersment numbers. And then for highlights, just, we're going to continue providing the services that we do to the other municipalities, those agreements are in effect indefinitely until one city or town or the other decides to move on, and I don't see that happening anytime soon. We moved to new court offices, as you're well aware, and we are pretty much all moved in, everything's in place. We implemented a new evidence presentation system, we got to use it for the first time last week, and it's great. We used to before hand evidence around, so the defendant would maybe have copies, or the city would have pictures of something, and they'd either make copies or have it, but now we've got a nice state-of-the-art projector system where you put the evidence on a tray, and it shoots onto a and it shoots onto a television that is hanging on the wall that everyone in the room can see. So, it makes that process a lot easier, and it's, it's been so far so good in using it one time so far. But last thing is just 13 consecutive years under budget, and we will, I'm sure, continue on that trend this year. The last slide, that is, that is the nuts and bolts. So, if you wanted to see where the dollars are going, every dollar of the 982,000 is accounted for here. This is, and if you're new to the council, you've not probably heard the word Odyssey before, but others have. Odyssey is our management system for the court, and it is a system that is constructed and man, not mandated, but the Supreme Court of Indiana has helped implement it. And every court in the state uses Odyssey except for just a few. And when I say a few, less than 10 courts statewide. So, if you think of every possible court in the state, everyone's on Odyssey except for those few. And it manages this, these numbers. So, it manages, it manages the case. So, if you go, if you go to like my, Indiana MyCase and look up a case, that's Odyssey telling you what's happened in the case, but it also does the financials. So, when, so when someone pays a judgment, it's then telling where those dollars go. And that's all regulated by State Board of Accounts and the Indiana Supreme Court. But, so this is the raw spit out. You can see which month to whom dollars are going. So, I know it's a little bit of an eye test, but I wanted to get it there on one, on one sheet. So, just one, a couple other things I did want to mention. Like I said earlier, we're on pace already for another record year. I, I'm assuming that'll keep up, but, I mean, you know, things can change. I also, in 2020, I didn't know there'd be a global pandemic. So, that, I guess that could happen. And then, with Cumberland, you'll saw, you saw an asterix on Cumberland, and I just wanted to make you all aware of this. Cumberland used to have its own court, and last year, they closed their court. And it officially closed in December 31st of 2023. So, it's been closed for a few weeks now. They have started filing infractions here. There's been some discuss, some questions asked. They've asked about ordinance violations. I don't think they do a ton of them, but that would require an interlocal agreement between that, this council and their council. So, that's just, I just wanted to mention that, so it's on your radar in case that comes down the pike at some point. But, so, we are the only city and town court in Marion County now. And as you can tell, if you're not Indianapolis, you're probably sending your stuff to our court. But with that, I'll take any questions.
How many years have you been, Judge?
This is my 13th year.
Okay.
All right. Well, that's easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Up next are committee reports. Start with the RDC. You should have a hard copy in front of you. Ask Matthew Koch to come up.
Good evening, counsel. I will be very brief, as you can see by the report from January. It was really a reorganization meeting. We introduced everyone who is on the RDC, and then we voted for officers. I've, for, I have no idea. I've been made president again. David Copenhagen, who is in the back here, has been named as vice president. And Andrew Noon, one of the other mayor, mayor's appointees, an attorney in town, he is now the new secretary. We are meeting next Thursday for our February meeting, and so we should be discussing more substantive items than anything having to do with reorganization. I do thank the members of the council who came by and observed the meeting. It's good to have you there. Of course, everyone, council members, the general public are always welcome to our meetings. It is a public meeting. And that's really all I have for you for this month. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matthew. Up next is the financial report. Clerk Treasurer Samantha Stratton.
Honey, you have a hard copy in front of you, but I will also read this out loud. January was a busy month. January 16th, 17th, and 18th, I attended Ames Court Treasurer Bootcamp and newly affected elected official training. Last week, I also met with team members from the Indiana Archives and Records Administration to discuss permanent and non-permanent records and removal processes. On Friday, I launched the city's new website that I spent the last several weeks designing. The old website and host was losing functionality, and there was a need to increase the user friendliness of beachgrove.com to make information easier for residents to find and to expand information that is hosted on the site. As the next few weeks progress, more will be added. Next month goals. It is a long-term goal for my time as clerk to begin the digitization and organization of records and the possible microfilming of at least one category of critical record. This month, I will be beginning this process by setting in place uniform file name conventions for all digital versions of files citywide, beginning to sort through all paper files and purging any eligible non-critical file and continuing to convert files. While transferring the website last month, I downloaded, then uploaded over 1,200 digital files of records. This barely scratched the surface of what needs to be done. Because there is no permanent digital city database home profile types like minutes and reports, each file that was on the old website dated prior to 2018 had to be downloaded one at a time. Thankfully, all files on the Indiana Gateway from 2018 to present can be downloaded all at once. In the interim of an official stored solution being set up, I have begun to store all records that have been saved or digitized in a public drop, public Dropbox linked to the website where the files will be able to be easily copied and transferred in the future. I have also been closely watching a state bill that would require further updates to the website and meeting video file requirements. It passed. These new regulations will not go into effect until July 1st, 2025, but planning for them will need to begin as soon as possible. I will also be working with our IT department to update our security trainings and implement methods that increase employee completion rates. Current bank balances. The bank account balances are listed below as of February 5th, 2024. These totals do not include all claims that were approved earlier this evening. City corporation, $5,770,354.41. Utilities, $1,401,172.80. Criminal investigation fund, $1,065,959.92. RDC general fund, $1,013,634.42. I will continue to have updated information as the year continues. Respectfully submitted, Samantha Stratton, Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Clerk Treasurer Stratton. Up next, counsel, you have the minutes and approval for our meeting dated January 2nd, 2024. Any questions or comments on those minutes?
Yes, I have questions on it. Last month, when we did the votes for the BZA, it said that originally Marcia Dorsey and, I'm trying to remember the other person. Oh, Selena Jarrett, that they had tied. That was not the case. Marcia Dorsey, or Selena Jarrett had more votes on the first vote. And we took a second vote on it to see who got it, and that was not even listed in the minutes.
Okay.
So, them both need to be corrected.
Thank you, sir.
And I had made a comment also to, to my colleague here to the left about running on a post, and I didn't see it in the minutes either.
About, about who running on a post? Oh, okay. Does that have to be included if it's not?
What, where are you talking about?
In your public comments.
Counselor comments?
I did not, I know I didn't include that, just because of.
Material.
Yeah. But I, if, I wouldn't, I can include that, so I'm amending them.
Anything else? Take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
As amended, one makes that motion.
Thank you. One second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you, counsel. Up next, public comment?
Yes, Pam Stalard.
Pam Stalard, 711 Churchman Avenue, Beach Grove. I just have a, one thing that I really would like some kind of answer to this evening, if I can get it at all. Just a couple other points to make. Tonight on the agenda, there's supposed to be some kind of resolution for transfer of funds from '24 to cover something, a debt we incurred in '23.
Can I go and speak? So, resolution number one, 2024, it's just named 2024 because it's happening in this current year. It's only dealing with funds from 2023. So, and it's not a debt. It's just moving money within categories that we spent last year. So, where there's no debt, it's just moving from line item to line item, so we can close out the year.
Since it doesn't say what this transfer of funds is for, tonight, I would like, if you can at all, read it line for line so that everybody knows what this resolution, this transfer of money from '24 to '23 is all about.
I do want to clarify, it's not from '24 to '23. It's line items within the 2023 budget within itself.
I didn't read it that way when I read the paper.
Yeah, we just have to call resolution one, twenty, when, anything we pass in this year, we just have to label it as 2024.
Yeah. Okay. Another item on the agenda was conflict of interest, nepotism, and contracts. Now, I don't know how these contracts work. I seldom hear them here in the council. I thought the council approved or disproved contracts or the board of works. So, it must be going before the board of works, because I seldom see a contract being brought up in here. I often wonder how these contracts are given out. Is it by bids, or just how is that, how does that occur? Conflict of interest and nepotism. Boy, there's one thing about Beach Grove. You really can't talk about anybody in city government because they're all related. Frequently, elected officials' children are getting their first paycheck from the city before anybody else knows that there was a job opening. The police department, oh my goodness, they have different names, but they're all related. So, like I said, boy, you can't talk about anybody because everybody's related. We need to narrow in on that and see if other citizens, other than relatives, can run the city of Beach Grove. I think that's something we probably need to take a look at. Cousins, in-laws, you name it. Okay. Another thing, and this is just a minor little situation. I've noticed frequently that the front of the police station, the pedestrian walkway is blocked. And since the police are so very close there, I thought maybe they could ride herd on that a little bit closer. Last time I drove past there, the parking lot across the street was full of marked vehicles, except for a few unmarked vehicles. And I am assuming those were unmarked vehicles because they had the handheld spotlight on the driver's side. So, it was either unmarked police vehicles or possibly pizza delivery men, but I suspect it was unmarked vehicles. Why are all these marked cars parked at the police station? They should be out on the street somewhere, or do we have that many officers running marked cars that work inside the station? Okay, back to that. I still, you're just not getting through to me on this '23 for '24. I just don't see how that's legal if, that if it goes by the way it read on the agenda.
It's just labeled, so anything we pass a resolution in the year 2024 has to be labeled. Resolution one, 2024, resolution two, 2024, because we are no longer in the date.
Okay. So, why are we doing this for something that was?
Because we have to, so we have to wait until December 31st, 2023 to officially close out all accounts, because you have to wait for all your bank statements to get in, to reconcile all the bank accounts.
Why wasn't the budget sufficient to cover it in '23?
It is sufficient to cover it.
Then why didn't we do it then?
We couldn't, until we reconciled all our bank accounts at the end of January.
Wow, okay.
I have an extra copy. She's welcome to have it if that's agreed.
Oh, there, I can, I read it when I walked.
No, you don't, what Liz is offering you, you don't have, because we're about to read that into the record.
I have an extra copy of.
Oh, thank you.
Is that copy of the resolution?
If that's helpful.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I'd be glad to share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that helpful?
We'll, we'll, we'll get into more details probably with that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I do have a question. On the '23 budget, did that come from the additional appropriation that was passed in December? Is that where that money came from? These were all shortfalls in the categories, if I'm reading this right.
They're all category shortfalls. We're just moving from categories to up and down.
Did the money come from '23, or is any money coming from '24?
No money's coming from '24, no.
Okay, so, it was done with the additional appropriation that you received, the million for in December of '23.
So, that, what, what this resolution is all about is the one point so many million for the police and a whole bunch of money for EMS. That's what this resolution is about?
No, it's just, so.
When you read it, I'll understand.
Oh, yeah, and if, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you, Pam. Up next, unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. Up first are park board appointments. Last month, we tabled that to allow a few other people to come out and explain why they're interested to be a council appointment for Beach Grove Parks Board. So, counsel?
I'd like to make a motion for Casey Tennant and Barb Huxgrie.
I, I know last year, last month, we talked about having other people come out and, and, and discuss why they're interested in it. Are you still wanting to do?
I thought that's what we was here to do.
Okay, all right, so.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, all right. So, if, do you guys have a list of who is interested, or do you just want me to invite? Okay. If you are here to speak, to ask for an appointment to the Beach Grove Parks Board by way of the city council, I ask you to come up. Introduce yourself, where you live, and explain why you're interested in serving on the parks board. Thank you, Barb.
First, I'd like to apologize for not being able to be here in January. I had a bad case of bronchitis. And then, I, a couple days before, I tried one of those new improved Maxima Menthol Ricola cough drops. It literally burnt the taste buds off my tongue and the inside of my cheek. It was horrid. I couldn't even talk. So, my name is Barbara Hook. I live at 101 South 17th Avenue. My, my qualifications to be part of the Parks Board, mostly, most importantly, I'm a citizen of Beach Grove, which gives me my main qualification. It is past time for some new blood working for our citizens with their interests top of mind. I grew up in Beach Grove long before many of you were even born and have decided to retire here in our small community. I worked for 47 years in the insurance industry, helping homeowners and businesses with problems they may have if there was a loss exposure. I can do the same while on the board with my thinking outside of the box, with the citizens' interests top of mind in all my votes. I actually began college at the age of 58 and completed 60 credit hours of accelerated classes with a continued 4.0 GPA until I decided to leave college behind. I proved to myself that I could do it, even though I never had the opportunity right out of high school. I actually began working in the insurance industry while still in high school. Our home backs up to Sarah T. Bolton Park and is nearest the smaller of the two basketball courts. I've seen some things in or around the courts, the basketball courts, happen that would turn your stomach. Some individuals in this world feel so entitled in their lives that it's sickening to see how they treat others. If you would add up all of the qualifications together, I'm probably more qualified for the Parks Department and maybe even the city council than some on the council now. The answer to getting anything done when representing the citizens of Beach Grove is not by raising your voice to others, bullying those who are speaking, or constantly wanting to be the center of attention. The things I'd like to see with the Parks Board involved, more children activities on either a Saturday or Sunday during the day at the parks. What happened to the petting zoos visiting? I'd like to see some workshops in the park where children can use their artistic skills to be more creative outside of the home. Creativity among our children has disappeared outside of the home when it's just for mind development. My idea of children's activities is not an 80s, 90s band holding a concert in the park once a month in the dark hours. I can't really see how this would be a well-attended event for our elderly either, as many are settled down in their homes for the evening before it even starts. And one of the things in the five-year plan for the Parks Department is E, that programs increase. And one of the things in the five-year plan for the Parks Department is E, that programs increase inspiration, recreation, health, and quality of life in residents from youth to seniors. There literally is not hardly anything at all for youth or seniors in the parks. I would love to see the dusk-to-dawn posted rules enforced by our great Police Department. I want to tell you, when I lived in Beech Grove, you didn't mess with the Beech Grove Police Department. I feel there would be many less nefarious acts committed in our parks if this were enforced. I see vehicles exchanging items, racing, individuals pulling the vehicles in grass so their headlights allow them to play ball until well after midnight, among other things, just from our view of things. Those who live near the park can verify that cars can be seen parked in Sarah T. Bolton well into the wee hours of the morning. Tom and our Parks Department are constantly repairing the ruts of those vehicles aimed at the courts, along with the idiots that park on the walking path. I personally stopped and asked someone who was not from Beech Grove if they would move their vehicle off of the walking path. And they threatened me by flashing a weapon for me to view in their vehicle. Many parents just don't feel safe bringing their children to the park right now. There should be something enjoyable for our seniors to do during the day in our parks, like maybe a pitch-in picnic. The Parks Board could provide the meat. I would love to see the city put up the short steel posts and maybe some steel rope to keep people from driving up on the grass near the basketball courts. I would imagine this would cause more work for the Parks Department, so I'm not sure if this may ever be adopted. The greenway path may be well-attended during the daylight hours, but, but few women actually feel safe to walk by themselves without a pew-pew in their pocket. There are no cameras on the greenway or trash containers from what I'm told. All I can think about the greenway is all the muggings and even a murder on the Broad Ripple Trail not that long ago. I drove through the park recently after dark and saw several teenagers bullying and hitting another youth near the exit of the park off Sixteenth, where it goes, where the greenway goes across, uh, through the park. And it was just sad. I think the park would also be well-attended if there were some sidewalks put in at every entrance to the park. Currently, there are zero sidewalks that would make it easy for strollers and possibly wheelchairs to enter the park. And according to the, uh, five-year plan, in two thousand eighteen, individuals with disabilities make it made up sixteen percent of the city's total population. I'm sure that has increased, and I'm sure, especially since the COVID plandemic came out, that we have a lot more than sixteen percent of our total population that is disabled, which gives you another reason that we need some sidewalks into all the entrances so people with wheelchairs and strollers can get down into the park comfortably without riding through mud. To the individual that requested such a resume, I never recall seeing one from you. Actually, you were a shoe-in vote because nobody ran against you. Would you mind providing us a detailed list of your background so we can decide if you qualify to be on the board, on the council? The rumors I'm hearing would definitely disqualify you from being on anything to protect our citizens. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have questions. So Barb, do you know how many family activities were between June first through the end of August last year in the parks?
For young children?
For children?
For young children and then for elderly separate.
How young are you talking?
And it's not concerts? The, the little toddlers, they need something.
So from June first through the end of August, there were over seventy activities for children and seniors.
Why are you even discussing this with me? Because it's your wife that's headed the community center.
She's the community center, that has nothing to do with Sarah T. Bolton or anything like that, so.
I see what happens in Sarah T. Bolton, I'm not going to argue with you.
Okay, but.
That's what I'd like to see.
Okay, so you're talking about the problems in the park. Do you have any ideas or any plans on what can be done constructively to work with us in the City Council and the Park Board? And I say that, all, all of us on the City Council and the Park Board.
I think the city should all work together with the Police Department. Maybe if we enforced the dusk-to-dawn, there wouldn't be so many nefarious things happening in the park. I mean, it doesn't matter if I go to bed at ten o'clock at night or if I go to bed at one in the morning. There's some bad stuff happening down there.
I agree.
I've seen people light, light trashcans on fire intentionally, and the Fire Department can probably, can probably vouch for that. It's just, bad things happen when it, you know, back when Beech Grove Police were super, super strict, you didn't drive through town with an inspection sticker out of date. So I would like to just see maybe if they would start patrolling and give warnings the first time, after that, maybe a ticket. Because it does, it is posted at all the entrances, it's dusk-to-dawn. And I think that would be very important if it's, if nothing else, maybe put a light up there that shines on that.
That's a good idea.
Sign, because these people need to be, there's so much bad stuff that happens. I've seen drug deals on the basketball courts. I've seen young children hearing words out of people's mouths that I guarantee you are not from Beech Grove, that I wouldn't take, my, my grandkids weren't allowed to go when they lived with me. We, we didn't take them to the park, it wasn't safe.
Right.
Because there is so much fighting and, and, oh, it's awful. It's just horrible. We see it all.
Right.
Well, to answer, I, I, I go to the concerts series, so I've been to a lot of them, and, and they do have a whole area for children the age that you're, because they're just so, you know, they have play areas.
But is it really enjoyable to them as much as it is something to be creative?
I see the kids having fun, and there is creati- creativity there.
So there are, there are, just so you'll know, there are, the, the children that I interact with seem to be having a very good time.
Well, that's good.
That playing together, there's a lot of activities for young, small children in that whole section.
Anything creative?
Yes, there, yes, there is, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I was very pleased and I was very supportive and I really enjoyed seeing the interaction, just so you know.
That's why I think that I would be a, a, a good member of the Parks Board.
Yeah, come down to a concert, yeah, good, I would love, yeah, thank you.
What type of programming would you add, Barb?
What type of programming would I add?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's talking?
Brian is.
Oh.
District Four.
Um, I, I mean, I think the Parks Board, the Parks Board could work together and come up with programming ideas and what we could do. You know, I just think that, you know, I'd love to see something where maybe have a kid's finger painting in the park or something that's not expensive to give these little guys that creativity ability, you know? Do a, you know, do a search for different types of leaves in the fall and make up a leaf booklet or something like they do. Even, even the little toddlers that are not even in preschool yet can still do that.
Yeah.
You know, I just think that, I just think it's important, you know? And I know a lot of the times that trail is heavily walked during the day. I know on weekends, I've seen Elizabeth, or I see, I've seen Liz down there walking and several others. But there's a lot of females that will not walk that park by them, that trail by themselves because it's just too dangerous. You know, there's no, there's no security cameras down there, there's, there's nothing, I mean, you know, buttons. Maybe sees, maybe see some of those put in, where they put a security button every so often that a person could push, like up at Broad Ripple.
Yeah, they did put those in there, yeah.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Casey Tennant, I live at one fifty-seven South Third. Uh, we bought about three years ago, um, and I know I did speak to you guys last time, so I'm going to keep this really brief. Um, I'm a very, very avid user of the park, as are my two kids. Uh, we homeschool, so I would say honestly, we're probably there more days than we're not. I don't know that I could homeschool, frankly, without the, uh, the resources and the, uh, the free space and, uh, the playgrounds and the nature space. And since I spoke last month, I've had a chance to talk to some Beech Grovers just generally about the parks. And I got to tell you, they are absolutely full of ideas, full of enthusiasm, full of feedback, things that have worked for them, things that don't. So I would just really like to use my time, my energy, uh, toward making sure that those things can happen. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So with young children, you could exactly, absolutely, bring, bring forth plans for creativity.
Absolutely, yeah, I have a seven-year-old and. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I've got a seven-year-old and a twelve-year-old, and I mean, we are outside a ton. And it's a nice age range, I think especially those middle kids can actually get lost even faster than the, the little ones, you know? Little ones have trees and butterflies and stuff, but the twelve-year-olds.
Do you walk the trail to some distance with the kids by yourself?
Uh, we do a little with where we're at, it's kind of faster to just go straight to either, uh, Hornet Park or, um, uh, Sarah T. Bolton, excuse me. But yeah, getting out on my bike on the trail in the spring, or I guess today, since it's a little fool's spring for us today, yeah.
Have you guys had the opportunities to have your kids out to any of the activities in the park during the summer?
Yeah, actually, it's funny, uh, we do not always take a ton of advantage during the summer, I think because we are homeschoolers.
Right.
But that's a huge, this last summer, we got to do so much more, and that was awesome, yeah, having, it feels like every time I check a website or a Facebook page, there's something different going on, or, or, you know, go run around, or.
Yeah, right.
Climb a tree. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Good evening. My name is John Dorsey, I live at seven thirty-two Killian Drive in Beech Grove. And I, I'm on the Parks Board, and I like to be reinstated on the Parks Board. I'm a veteran, I love the outdoors, I work with the Coast Guard on the Ohio River and, and, and the Corps of Engineers on the Ohio River. And people don't understand what the Corps of Engineers does. But we cleaned up the Ohio River in less than thirty years. So that's one of the reasons I'm interested in keeping Beech Grove clean and everything. So that's all I've got to say, I could tell you a lot of work about me. A lot of people in Beech Grove don't really know me. I belong to a lot of organizations, not even in Beech Grove. I belong to the Blue Lodge, I'm a Shriner. I belong to the Eagles, I belong to the, uh, American Legion, so. But I still like Beech Grove, I'm a transplant. And I've lived here for fifty-seven years. And I've seen a lot happen in Beech Grove. And I think Beech Grove has grown and grown, and I hope it continues to grow. And I hope I can grow with it. Thank you.
Hey, John? Hey, John? I'm up here. I just have one question. Since you've been on the Park Board already, what's been your biggest challenge while being on the Park Board?
My biggest challenge, the first year, I found out that, uh, the Parks Board did not have any bylaws. And I couldn't believe it, I've been on boards before, and there was bylaws to tell what's important and what's not important and what the, what the Parks Board is for. And the Park, Parks Board is for the people, each and every one. And if they're come from out of state, out of, out of town or anything, that park is open to everybody. Not just Beech Grove people.
I agree, that's all I have, it's the only question I have.
And I'll tell you a story, I took a ride years ago. I took a ride years ago. I had a, I, I had a, I have a boat, I've been boating all my life, since I was a teenager. And I had a sport yak, I don't know if you know what a sport yak is? Hangs on the back of a, a houseboat. And I had it home, and the floods came, and I told my father-in-law. I said, I'm putting this in the creek, let it creek and see what happens. Well, I found out what happened. There's a lot of bridges along the way, and I was having to laying down in that thing. And I'll be honest with you, I've been on the Ohio River for fifty-some years, and I can't swim. But I've been off my boat, taking ropes off my prop, helping other boaters. But we cleaned up the Ohio River, I mean, cleaned it up. It was, it, it was dirty when I first went down there, but I was forced to go down there because I've got a bigger boat and I had to sue, uh, uh, oh, the one down in Bloomington, uh, for, in the Four Winds, because I bought a boat and I, and I paid for my slip, and I called them and told them I was having it shipped down there. And they told me that, uh, they didn't have room for me, they sold too many boats at the boat show. So I sued them, Lieutenant Governor and everybody, Corps of Engineers, I mean, the, the DNR and everybody. And I finally got my money and I got a slip. But I didn't put my boat in that slip, I was already on a river and loving it. But thank you.
Thanks, John.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Whaler, I live at Seventy South Twelfth Avenue here in Beech Grove, I've been here since nineteen ninety. I just completed my first, uh, three-year term on the Beech Grove Parks Board. Uh, I'm also involved in the Beech, the newly-formed Beech Grove Parks Foundation. We've got a lot of things on that we, our, our vision of what we want Beech Grove Parks to look like. Uh, we, we've got, we're taking input from the citizens of Beech Grove, we're not just limited to our own vision, but the citizens of Beech Grove. So we're, uh, we're working hard toward that, and I'm just asking for another, a reappointment to the Beech Grove Parks so we continue, uh, the, the projects that we've done, things that we are envisioning on the Parks Board. Uh, and the Parks Foundation is expanding the actual landscape of the Beech Grove Parks property. Uh, we've got the, um, we want to put in batting cages at the Little League. Uh, we have the pedestrian bridge from the parking lot over to the three shelters. Uh, we've got an amphitheater that we'd love to have installed or created there to kind of expand, not just for the, the concerts through the Beech Grove, uh, uh, parks and Hornet Park, but just for other events that can, can take place there, it'd be a nice structure, foundation structure that can go to so many things. So I'm just asking for your support, uh, to continue what we've started and what I started three years ago. And our goal throughout it all is to make Beech Grove Parks a destination park. When that family gets up on a Saturday morning and they're deciding to go down to Brown County or Eagle Creek, why not Beech Grove? Why not walk the trails of Beech Grove, play basketball on the courts, uh, play baseball, whatever the case may be, get your feet wet in the creek. But we want to make Beech Grove Parks a foundation or a, a destination park. And I think with the people we have in place and for the other people that are going to be adding to the, to the, uh, to the landscape, uh, of the council, I think we've got some, uh, some good things ahead for us, so I appreciate your time.
Talk a little bit about grant writing. And I know I, I meant to mention that to Casey because I know she's interested in grant writing. So the parks do a lot of good work with the grant writing to bring monies in to support these.
We do, that's, that's, that's big time. Without the grant money, there's a lot of things that could not even have taken place currently in, in the future, that we, we rely on those grants. Uh, they're not easy to write, we've had people in place that are very good, uh, doing that type of thing. I'm not one of those, but I'm still a, a team player. But without the grants, there's so many things that, that have taken place already that would not have taken place without, without that financial, financial support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, She.
Hi, uh, my name's Kelsey Beal, I'm at one five eight South Ninth. Um, I was here last time, so I'm going to try to keep it pretty brief. But, um, I, uh, work at Mater Design right here on the Third and Main, we're landscape architects, site designers. So for, um, fifteen-ish years now, I've been designing outdoor spaces and of all kinds, parks being a major part of my, uh, education and career in landscape architecture. Uh, we work with local governments and parks departments all over the state, um, to, uh, we gather a lot of public input and input from the municipalities themselves and the Parks Department regarding maintenance, to design places that can last a long time and fit the budget and give, uh, you know, get the most bang for your buck out of the parks. Right now, uh, my favorite project that I'm working on, it's also my current project, is with a small city park in Bloomington, Indiana. Uh, we've done several public presentations there to gather input and, um, have just really learned a lot when you take input from the public, you know? Pickleball is the new hot thing right now, and there's a lot of people that love it and want ten pickleball courts. And then there's people who live next to the park that said, if you'd put a pickleball court in there, you know, it's, um, that, that's just kind of comes with the territory, so there's always compromise involved. And, um, I don't want to come up here and say, I'm a designer, and so I'm gonna put in all these expensive, huge amenities that, uh, will bankrupt us and, um, you know, that, that only four people want. It's really about, you know, like it was said before, parks are for everyone. And, um, it's a living, breathing thing that I, uh, really feel my experience, my education can contribute a lot and I can be of good service to the city by being on the Parks Board.
Tell us a little bit about the pollinator garden and, and as Barb was interested in, things that, the value of that for young people to see the, the nature and to see what goes on in a pollinator garden.
Yeah, um, the prairie of poetry, as, as it's known. So, um, Sarah Bolton was, uh, is a famous poet, and we, a couple of years ago, put in a small prairie garden full of wildflowers. I'm also a native plants fanatic, um, so there's a lot, there's a huge opportunity for environmental education there, um, just explaining what pollinators are, how they have evolved with these plants, um, they need these plants. And it's like the core of, it's the bottom of the food web, so, um, how important those ecosystems are. There's huge educational opportu- opportunities there. There's also art opportunities there, uh, I haven't mentioned, I, I run the Beech Grove Artist Collective. And we have our art festival in the, the park every year, um, I just reserved that today. That will be on October fifth this year. Um, and sidebar, first Fridays. That will be on October fifth this year. And sidebar, First Fridays are now moving to Fourth Fridays to alleviate some competition with other First Friday events. Anyway, so the pollinator garden, I've got, I've got a stack of ideas that I just haven't brought to the Parks Board or Foundation yet regarding finishing the pollinator garden. That was put in with a lot of volunteer efforts, and there were just, there were some seeding areas that never really happened. We need to replace some of the birdhouses. There's so much opportunity for art there, and the Artist Collective actually has a group of people who want to start a, a poetry or literary component to the Artist Collective and do poetry readings and reenactments of Sarah Bolton's poems at the pollinator garden. So I've got just the list of projects to find money for, find volunteers for, all of those things. That's just in my head all the time. I've, I've got a list of projects in my head and ideas for pretty much every park.
And I believe the plan for that was to include something for disability type access, correct? Was there still some disability type access in those plans that maybe?
Maybe not for the prairie garden itself, but there are definitely small improvements that can be made. Like the woman before brought up, ruts in the park and, or ruts in the grass and things like that. I think they're just like, I walk around and see things like, maybe we should put gravel right here. Maybe this should be concrete, and just little things like that are where my design experience can come in handy.
And I know pickleball. A lot of my friends my age now, I believe they bring their own nets and come in and play pickleball on those courts now, correct?
Yes, I saw people doing that today.
Friends of mine from outside of Beech Grove love to come to those courts and use those, so they're, they use those now for those activities.
And there's opportunities for space for pickleball at the Park on Knight Hartman, where the, all the baseball fields are. There's some, there's a opportunity there for another prairie garden. And, you know, I think that park is one place where we could look at making some minor changes to get some life back into there and use it more. Things like that. Anything else for me?
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
So Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have our appointees. Will you also have two?
I have three. I'm sorry.
You have three?
Yeah.
For the, okay, okay. Have you named them three yet?
I have not. I know I named one. That is Autumn James. She's out there. That's it. That's it. So, Council, several people have come up to speak about their interest in serving on the Parks Board as a council appointee.
Real quick, is Angel in charge of the rental of the kiosks or the whatever you call them?
The shelters.
Do those always get rented out completely every season?
Completely every season? No, our season is May first through the middle of October. They're rented almost every weekend, yes.
Okay.
But not every, not, not every week.
Have there ever been any plans to build more of those?
That, not as far as I know. I'm not, I wouldn't be involved in that conversation.
I, I, I had heard that, that they do get rented out regularly, every weekend, and I just thought that it might be interesting or profitable to have some more of those, and.
I'm not sure what the profit would be on that. We charge sixty-five dollars a rental, and we rent them every day to groups, so.
I could do the math on that.
They don't bring in, I think, enough money to pay for a shelter here at all. So you have to, you know, that's, that's the reality of the numbers they come in anyway. Even weekends and days and weekends, I don't think it would, at that rate, I don't think you could bring in enough to pay for a shelter.
Okay.
We did talk about using the trailer as a mixed-use space, or if you could get a shelter or get some house shelter built there, that could be a multiple purpose area that could be rented and used for.
Okay, thank you.
Council, open up to?
I'd like to make a motion. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that went up here. I can tell you, there's a couple of people I'd like to vote for that I'm not going to vote for, and that's a good problem to have. I'd like to nominate Casey Tennant and Barb Hooks.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Kelsey Beal and Mr. Weller.
I'd like to say also that, you know, Mr. Dorsey, Mr. Weyler, Kelsey, Hook, Tennant, all of you, you know, you're very passionate. I'll say that. I think there's some here that are definitely qualified. There's no question. As to that, some of you have already done the job. I'm gonna kind of go along with what I did in the last one, where I'm trying to change things up just a little bit, knowing that the mayor does have, have some appointments coming. I'm sure he'll make some really good calls on that as well. So I'm gonna also go with Barb Hook and Casey Tennant.
So that's nominated. We're gonna vote.
Yeah, they're running. Any other nominations? Go ahead and close nominations, Council?
I make the motion, close it.
Second?
Second, thank you. So nominations are closed. We have four nominations to vote on. So we'll open up to vote. You get two votes per council member. So I'm gonna start on my far right.
I'd like to vote for Barb Hooks and Kelsey Beal.
My vote is not what it was gonna be when I came in, and I know you have appointments. So I'm going to vote for Kelsey and Casey.
I want to vote for Barb Hooks and Casey Beal.
Oh, wait, wait. I need clarification. Kelsey Beal or Casey Tennant?
I'm sorry, Casey Tennant. My, my bad.
Which one is Kelsey and which one's Casey?
I'm Kelsey.
Casey's in the red.
Casey and Kelsey, okay. All right, I'm going to vote for Casey. She's with my opponent from the election, but I'm gonna vote for her. And Barb Hooks, because she lives right on the park, and I would like to see some of the, some of the lawlessness that happens taken care of. I, I appreciate you looking out for that, Barb. That's my votes.
Council, make it.
I'm also going with Barb Hook and Casey.
Casey Tennant, Barb Hooks.
I'm gonna vote, I want Casey Beal and, and, Casey Beal and, Kelsey, Kelsey Beal and Casey Tennant. Sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
Kelsey Beal and Casey Tennant.
Okay. Clerk Treasurer Stratton.
Give me a moment, please.
No worries.
All right, so Casey Tennant with six, Barb Hooks with five, and Kelsey Beal with two.
Does that sound right to everybody else? Sounds good. Good, thank you. All right, congratulations to, say it again, Barb Hook and?
Casey Tennant.
Casey Tennant. Congratulations. Thank you, Council, and thank you to everyone else who came out to offer their service to the city. I appreciate you guys coming out and offering that. The parks are an exciting thing here in the city. I'm excited to see what else they can do here in the coming years. So thank you all for your offering to serve. Up next, Council, you have the conflict nepotism and contract forms. We have a couple new ones to approve tonight. Majority of them were approved in our January meeting, but I will defer to our Clerk Treasurer tonight to see who else we have to approve this evening.
I have two currently conflict of interest disclosure statements, one from Sandy Seward of the Board of Works due to her son working in the Parks Department and also her husband working part-time in DPW. And also I have another one from Robert Mercury due to his son Luke Mercury is employed as a BG officer. However, he does not have direct supervision of him. And I currently have two nepotism certificates from the same people. Sign. And then Dan, do you have yours?
No, I do not. And I will just tell you right now, I talked to State Board of Council, and I talked to the Public Access Counselor, and I was told, as long as they do not pertain to me, I do not have to sign them, so I will not be signing them.
So you, I, can I, so you signed them in August, so you're not gonna sign them again?
I don't think I signed them in August.
I can find them and?
Irregardless, I'm still not, I'm still not signing them. They don't pertain to me, so there's no reason for it.
But I know in the past, in August, you disclosed about your business on Main Street.
And I just did that for the reason, just in case somebody did, but I'm not contracted to the city of Beech Grove. We do no business with them, and I can't stop anyone from walking in and buying something.
And I think with the other ones, I think it's more of just saying that you, you understand the policy, nepotism policy, you understand?
I understand it, but I will not vote.
I was just saying for the public, that's, so you're not stating that you do have a contract. You're basically stating, as an elected official, you understand the policy, the state statute, you understand the contract and also the nepotism, and then disclose any, any conflicts there.
Yes, I understand. Okay. My question is, did you get these from every employee in the city of Beech Grove? Why do you want mine?
Uh, I'm not sure why. We've, we've always done it with the, with the, with the council. So I know when you're a Clerk Treasurer, the council provided them as well.
We provided them. We never said you had to sign them.
Okay.
It's just a control thing.
Okay.
I don't work for the council. I don't work for the Clerk Treasurer or the mayor.
Oh, absolutely.
I work for the citizens of Beech Grove that elected me.
Anything else? Okay. So we have those formed there. Need a motion to approve the forms that were submitted to Clerk Treasurer Stratton.
House Mick said motion to approve the forms submitted to Clerk Treasurer.
I'll second.
Councilor Mack in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. All right, Council, new business. In front of you have Resolution Number One, twenty-twenty-four, Transfer Funds for Twenty-Twenty-Three. I'll do a little bit of a brief background. I'll defer to our Clerk Treasurer. So each year, we have a resolution to close out the year. So inside of each department in our city has a budget. You have categories. Category one, two, three, and four. So at the end of the year, you realize one category was, fell a little short, but another category had excess funds. So this resolution just approves us to move them from one category to another, and that's all it does. We're not increasing the budget. We're not using funds from Twenty-Twenty-Four. This just allows us to clean up our appropriation report, make sure there's no negatives, and then move positives where there are negatives. So this goes through each department here. Again, this is done every year. I think it's, I think we've done it just about every year, I think, for many years in the past, recent past. But that, that goes through the Board of Works, EMS, police, senior, local road and street, NVH, and public safety. So I'll defer to our Clerk Treasurer Stratton to read the resolution into the record.
Resolution One, Twenty-Twenty-Four is a budgetary resolution authorizing a transfer funds, whereas monies are needed in various departments of the general RHNS, NVH, and PST funds for the Twenty-Twenty-Three budget year. From these, from the following departments. Board of Works, Other Services to Personal Services, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. And EMS, from Other Supplies to Personal Services, one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. From Other Services to Supplies, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. From Capital Improvements to Personal Services, twenty-thousand-four-seven dollars. And Police Department, Personal Services to Supplies, four-hundred dollars. Other Services to Supplies, three-thousand-seven-hundred-five dollars. And Senior, Personal Services to Supplies, one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. And Personal Services to Other Services, ten dollars. From LRNS, Supplies to Other Services, twenty-five-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-five dollars. From NVH, Supplies to Capital Improvements, four-thousand-three-hundred dollars. From PST, Other Services to Personal Services, one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-one dollars. Therefore, it be ordained that the common council of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, approves the above sums of money to be transferred into the categories named and for the purpose specified, subject to the law discovering the same.
Thank you.
Jim, I have a question before we go in.
Yeah, either one, yeah.
Item number, or ordinance number thirty-one oh eight, introduction adoption of ordinances. A, it says, "All ordinances and resolutions shall be filed regularly with Clerk Treasurer at least three, three working days before a regular meeting, except in emergencies. The Clerk Treasurer shall immediately after filing number the ordinances and deliver copies to the mayor and work copies to all council members at least two working days prior to the council meeting, at which it is to be introduced. The council may..." Let, this last sentence don't pertain to this. My point being is, you gave me my packet. It's six forty-five, six fifty-five this afternoon, and I was not given this information, so I'd like to table this to the March fourth meeting.
I have a question, sir. So I emailed those out. Did you get, do you, do you have access to your city email?
No.
You don't have access to your city email?
No, I don't have the number to get into a telephone thing. No.
Okay, but?
Dan, you've been in your city email, because you've replied to a couple of emails.
You have.
And I, I do also.
So I know you have access to it.
I thought you was talking about the?
Emails.
Talking about your city emails.
Do you have access to your city email?
Yes, I do.
Did you get your packet delivered digitally on Friday?
I don't know what day it was. I don't check them every day.
And I do want to state for the record that if any in a state code, email does qualify as mail, and our ordinance only states that the mayor has to deliver by mail. It does not say hand-deliver. So I just want to state that for the record.
Yes, it does say by mail. I didn't receive it by mail.
You did receive it by email.
This does not say email in this ordinance.
I understand that, but state code overrides local ordinance, and state code says email counts as mail, as of two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, so I, so I, I emailed them digitally. I sent an email on Thursday. I said, "If any council members would still like a hard copy of this, I'd be happy to drop one off." I had two council members reply to me, and I delivered those on Friday. And I told, told the council members that we would have hard copies this evening for you to be wanting a hard copy, just to, in the world of Twenty-Twenty-Four, everything's going digital. And I think going, sending these packets digitally, I think people have more of a chance of reviewing them immediately, as opposed to getting them on their doorstep. And that's, that's practice in the past. But I think updating to digital, I think is, is, I think it's the, the way to go. Though, I mean, we're Twenty-Twenty-Four, we have access to our emails. I don't think anybody else has an issue about being delivered digitally. I know some people like paper, and that's fine. I'll still have some copies here for you. But at the end of the day, I think getting them digitally, and that's the way that they were sent on Friday. So.
Well, I, I would just like to comment on that. I don't know when it was done previously by email. I've never known it to be. Secondly, you know, it, your ordinance ought to be up to date if you're gonna do that. You gave the council no advanced notice to this whatsoever.
Well, I, I gave you the option. I said I'd be happy to handle it from tomorrow.
When did you do that? A week ago?
On Thursday.
Why did you do it at the last meeting? When'd you guys decide to go digital? You know, there's some people don't have computers. They don't have printers.
Correct. And that's why I said I'd be happy to have a hard copy. But, but that's why, when I mentioned, I said I'd be happy to hand-deliver one tomorrow. I got an email from Counselor Ernest and Counselor Himargarn, and I delivered those the next day, correct? On your doorsteps.
Yes.
So, like I said, I'm fine with that. I think it just cuts down on gas, time. The digital will be living. Everybody has access to email. We've all responded to emails. We'll all have our computer in our hands on our phone. So having a hard copy, I can have that, no worries at all. So that's, that's not a big deal. I'd be happy to have hard copies here. But just moving forward, I think in today's world, going digital, that's the way to go.
I've got no problem if you let us know and give us the common courtesy.
And that's what I did. You did.
At the last meeting. No, I don't want you to send me something by email or anything else a week ahead of time, and your ordinance even is not up to date, and it is just silliness.
Okay, I apologize for the late, late notice on Thursday.
So if, how do, what, I would like you to clarify your statement that the ordinance is not up to date. What do you mean by that?
Well, right here, I just read it to you, that they have to give it to us. Let's see. Work copies to all council members at least two working days prior to the council meeting.
Right, so it was?
I nailed.
RDC, they give theirs out a week if they can. Mad, when I was at the last meeting, said that, and?
They get what out? I'm sorry?
Their agenda and packets sent to them, or?
I got the agenda.
We, we email, we email to the RDC.
Yeah, it's digital.
That's fine. I don't care how you do it, but have the common courtesy.
I did. And again, I apologize for, for telling you on Thursday that we're gonna do it the next day, but also said, "If you're willing to have one tomorrow, that's fine. I'll handle it one tomorrow." And then hopefully for March, we'll get back to the all-digital. So I was giving you a month. So again, I apologize that it wasn't enough.
I got this this week, and you've got this on the agenda tonight.
Counselor, sir.
Yeah, I got a motion to table this until the March fourth meeting.
I have a question. What does that mean for closing out the year if we table this?
We can't. So the Clerk Treasurer's and report is due in.
And my, my point is, this is just to clear you two out. The Clerk Treasurer from last year, you've got categories that are in the red, even after the additional appropriation.
They're not in the red. I would. They're not in the red, I would like to, I would like to explain. So, let's say you have a car, and you budget five hundred dollars to work on your car for the entire year, and you've budgeted three hundred dollars for the windows and two hundred dollars for the car, like the tires. That would be a ridiculous budget, but let's go with it. And the year goes by, and you have several flat tires, and you only need five hundred dollars for the tires, and you don't use it on the windows. So, you've had to use five hundred dollars on the tires, okay, and you don't use any on the windows. The way the state works and the city works, you can't just use all five hundred dollars with no oversight. You have to get permission to transfer that two hundred dollars used on the windows to your tires. We are not in the red, we have all of the money we need in the Board of Works category, the EMS category, the police, the senior, the LRNS, the NVH, and the PST. We are simply asking to move the money from the part of your car, in that metaphor. So, we're not in the red, we just need to move it to the correct line item under the category, so we can close out the year, and start twenty twenty-four, and leave twenty twenty-three behind. That is all we're asking, we are not in debt.
Correct, so in order to do this, we'll do, if, if we do this, then we're allowed to close out the month of December. We've had all our bank recs done for December, allows to close out the month. These, this, this transfer of funds from one category to the next will allow us to close out the appropriation report. And then the clerk treasurer can start working on the annual financial report, that is due at the end of February, first of March. That, just as you are clerk treasurer, yes, Counsel Duffer?
So, just to clarify, we're not spending a dime.
No, absolutely not.
We're just moving funds from one category that had an overage to another category that had an underage.
Everything inside of each department, yes, sir. I don't know if you did that as clerk treasurer, when you were clerk treasurer, but Counsel Mackens, I know you did, each January, February.
Yes, I did do it, and the only reason why it's being done now is so you don't get your ding on an audit. This should have been done.
Do you want me to get a ding on an audit?
I don't care, if you're not doing your job, yeah, that's your report card.
Okay, Counsel Mackens, did you do this transfer when you were clerk treasurer?
Yes, I did, my very first year, I got a ding because I didn't, I had one item that was like a few hundred dollars short.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so by way of approving this, that will allow us to close out the year, start twenty twenty-four on a fresh page. So, I think that's, that's all we're asking. City council is asking for approval tonight to approve this, so we can close out the year, and start twenty twenty-four and get in the end of the year, so that's all it's asking. So, again, it's, it's a standard procedure that just happens every year, and it's happened for many, many years ongoing by the council, and the clerk treasurer presents it, so it's the same as what's happened in the past, so.
There's a motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in, we're gonna, all those in favor, start on my far right.
I.
I mean that you, you agree, you want?
To table it, to, to not close out the year and table it?
I'll agree.
I don't want to table it, I don't think it needs to be tabled.
Yeah, that's not what I was making a motion for.
Okay, all right, he was making a motion to table it. Okay, because, like I said, as, as I told-
I rescind my motion.
Okay, thank you. So?
Is there a second?
Second to rescind it?
So, you don't have to second to rescind, you're, we're asking for, he's asking if there's a second to Dan's motion.
Dan has moved to table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Let's do a voice vote, starting at Dan there.
I vote yes.
I vote we vote on it.
So, you vote no.
I vote no.
Yes to table.
Yes to table.
No.
Yes.
No, we need to read it.
So, what is that vote there?
Four to three, it's a table.
To table it? Okay, okay, so the city of Beach Grove cannot close out twenty twenty-three?
Hold on, hold on. Is that it? Can we talk about it some more, because this really doesn't need to be tabled, it's closed out last year.
I don't understand the reasoning to table it, I, I don't, I don't know what, what information the council needs. I, I, I-
Yeah, what information do, do they need?
Counselor Ernest, what, what information are you looking, can I ask you, what information are you looking to see? So, like I said, if, if you go online, you can see, this has been done every year. And again, it just allows us to close out the year, move into it, the annual financial report is the job of the clerk treasurer, he or she has to submit that on the gateway. And in order to do all our financial reports, we have to have this information to close out the year, yes, sir.
I do believe that Dan has a valid concern about getting his packet late. I know that he doesn't have a printer, I live, I've lived next door to him for thirty years, he does not have a printer, so.
But Chris, part of the email system is for all of us to communicate, all of us. And that's the way things are done, this is the way they communicate with us, and we all knew this coming in.
I don't disagree with you, Brian.
And, and he's, and he's read his emails before. You know, if we use these to communicate, if the mayor sends us, sends me something, he's gonna send it through that email system.
For the last twelve years, Dan McMillan has had a packet dropped in his door by Mayor Buckley.
Okay, but this isn't Mayor Buckley.
Correct, and I'm also asking for common courtesy, if he didn't get one, I, I would like to think that you would just call me, you have my phone number, just say, hey.
Jim, I'm sorry to tell you I don't, it's probably somewhere in my phone, and I could find it in case of emergency.
He has email address.
But yeah, so, like I said, I, I just wish you'd have that common courtesy as a council. If you have an issue, if you feel like you're missing something, I'd be happy to, to, to let you know. I, I was assuming that you all received your email, so you never received that email, you never clicked on it?
I don't know, I probably, no, this was a busy weekend for me, I got a lot going on, probably not. But the whole point is, she can close out the end of this year with that being in the red. Or if it's not in the red, more power to them, but she can do this, you're acting like it's something that cannot be done.
It's something that shouldn't be done, it's not that it can't be done, it shouldn't be done, we should be able to close out two thousand twenty-three.
To do this the way that you guys want to do it. I can understand what the reasoning behind it was.
What's the illegal part about the transfer?
So, you don't want oversight? So, this is giving you transparency that you've requested, and showing you where we are moving money line to line.
Well, you had plenty of times you called a special meeting in December.
I wasn't there.
No, you didn't do it, Mayor Buckley did, and it should have been taken care of at that time. You've had all this time, now we're gonna throw it on the new council, and there's no reason for it.
But all we're doing is, we're closing out last year, the funds were already there, this is what you did during it.
I just assume we move on.
Can I ask you a question about, like, your business, your flower business? Do you ever get emails that challenge you within a very short window of time to change what you have to do with your business, and then you manage to accept that, and you manage to make it all work?
Absolutely, we do. No, this is government, and government operates nothing like a regular business. And I'd like to move on, it's been voted on.
All right. All right, that is all we have under new business, we will move to council comments, I'll start with council comments.
One, before we put that to bed, why don't we just decide who here needs a hard packet dropped off to them each month? Or, or are you going to do it electronically?
In the mailbox, yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys, it's just, it's a very time-
If you put it in the mailbox, they're gonna find you, they did us one year.
No, mailbox here at City Hall.
Yeah, not the, yeah, not the post, yeah.
Where all your pay stubs go and all that goes. So, down in the office, where your mailboxes are.
Okay.
So, make sure you clarify that, that you're not doing, at the resident door, you're putting it in the mailbox.
At City Hall.
Make sure you understand that, you are here, you understand that, right, Dan?
I will send it digitally, and that's fine, like I said, I'll send it as-
No, I don't want it in my mailbox, it's against the law.
At City Hall.
Your City Hall mailbox.
At City Hall.
Well, I'll tell you what, here's something that's funny, and I'll bet the rest of people, here's three things from the pay stubs and so forth. The city, you know, they always go into packet. And when I was clerk treasurer, we didn't have anybody pick these up, it always went to packet, because no one went to their City Hall mailbox. I haven't even seen mine downstairs.
You know, okay, I would like to, I'm, Jim did not put that in your packet. I removed everyone's items except for Liz, because Liz was empty, and Liz came and picked up her stuff out of her mailbox. I put everyone's up there, so you didn't have to go down to your mailbox, I do not have to do that in the future, because you know where it is. So, I did that out as, as a courtesy. So, you, Dan, you know where your mailbox is, so?
I have not seen it, I don't know which one's mine, irregardless, it makes no difference to me. I would like them put in my packet, the packet delivered to my house like it has for the past twelve years.
Legally, he does not have to do that, but he can make his decision.
So, for the council members who, who aren't aware, each of you have a mailbox downstairs, it is in the copy room. So, if you go in that, that short building downstairs, not this side, the other side, if you go in there, talk to Angie, Karen, Ruth, or Linda, or clerk treasurer Stratton, and it's in that copy room, there's seven bins there, each one has your name printed on it, and has all your pay stubs in there, and then any information, any mail that you might get throughout the month, it is in there. So, I know in the past, some councillors have picked them up, some haven't, so it, it is there for that option, if you, if you see fit to stop by, so.
And those mailboxes have been there as long as I've been serving on the council, so I, I'm, I'm pretty safe, I can say they were there when you were clerk treasurer.
They absolutely were, and I can tell you.
So, you know where they are?
Rarely, it ain't no one ever coming to get their mail.
But you know where they are.
I know where they are, I just don't know which one's mine.
Okay.
I didn't know if I could get through that belt system to get into the copy room there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, the, each one have, had your individual names on there, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But I still won't be picking it up.
Well, just so we don't go through this again in March, just to, just to make it clear. Please, just please, will you pick them up at your mailbox?
No, I will not, and there will be-
We can send them via postage, that is what's only required by law, thing that you just read.
Well, what I want to know, which we've never been brought up to, is who do we need to see and how much in advance to put something on the agenda?
That's in the ordinance as well.
Because this-
Talk to council.
You turn it in to me three days in advance, and I take it to the mayor two days in advance.
The council, this is their meeting, this is the common council of Beach Grove. It is not the Samantha meeting, it's not the Jim meeting.
Correct, and it's, it's three days in advance.
All right, we'll just change the ordinance, I mean, it's simple.
Mr. Duffer, as President Pro Tim and being his neighbor, will you pick it up from his mailbox and take it to his door?
No, I don't want it, and, no, there's personal information, there's pay stubs, no, I don't want any of it.
And that's something that, that I've always thought was kind of awkward, is that I just put on everybody's doorstep. Even if they're not home, if you're working all day, if I put it in the morning, then it's there for hours, and you don't even know it till you get home at night. So, I've always thought that was kind of alarming to myself.
In today's world, what's that?
I've never received packets, as clerk treasurer, you don't receive packets, you're here in the office every day. So, I never got one as, on my personal porch, so I always thought that was kind of weird, that, that's just normal protocol in today's world, which is weird for me to just leave packets on each of your porches, but, no worries, so, all right.
Okay.
Uh, council comments, starting on my far right, council Ernest.
No, I'm good with digital too.
Thank you. Counsel McKenna?
I'm good with digital, I do have a couple comments, one, congratulations to Barb and Casey. I think it's great, plus everybody else, I love to see all the passion, I was there for the people in those spots, so. Glad you guys got it, and I know you'll do great things. The only other comment I really have is, you know, regardless of the reason that I'm here, I'm here, and I'm here because I love this city, and I ran because I love this city. And I hope to do good things for the city, as I've tried to do already, volunteering, helping out. People are watching, I said this last time. Today's been full of bureaucratic bullshit, and I hate it. People are watching what they voted for. We had something tableed tonight that didn't need to be. It's foolish. We need to work through that and work together instead of doing that, that's all I have.
As a lifetime resident of Beach Grove, I agree with Barb Hooks Griggs, that policing in Beach Grove has really gone down, you know, I mean, when you seen the Beach Grove police back in the day, you picked up trash as you was walking down the road, that's just the kind of respect you have for the law. So, I'll just leave that saying to also, the dusted on thing is something that needs to be enforced, because I leave behind the track there at the pit, and on a nice summer night, I like to have my windows open, but I can't, because there's kids down there at midnight, one o'clock hooting and hollering, and there's signs there, no dogs on the track. I watch people's dogs crap all over the place and stuff, you know, that's just another little thing there. And my third one is, I don't know where the mailboxes are, so if somebody please show me that, I'd be more happy to come get mine, you know, won't be a problem at all. Because I do not have a computer, I'll state that right now.
It's all good, no worries, yeah, I understand, no worries, thank you, sir. Counsel Duffer?
No comment.
Counsel Mackens?
No comment.
Counsel McMillan?
First off, I would like to offer my deepest condolences to Matt Hickey and his family on the loss of his wife. A terrible tragedy, and I want to congratulate the people that were appointed this evening, and again, thank the ones that came out, and hopefully the mayor will appoint some of them, and that's it.
Counsel Lampy?
Again, congratulations to our new board members, our Parks Board members. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, Secure Firearms Stories Saves Lives. Marion County Youth Violence Coalition, between today and the ninth, they have a gun lockbox giveaway at one three seven five West Sixteenth Avenue, between nine AM and four PM. So, through this program, you can get a lockbox free giveaway for firearms, I wanted to just bring that up to the community.
Thank you, I appreciate it, counsel, our next council meeting is scheduled-
May I ask you quick?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, when, when will your appointments take place, and, and how can I find that for the, the parks?
Uh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to leave that, again, we are all here for the same reason, because our love for the city of Beach Grove, we're all elected, the people voted for all of us. So, if there's any issues, I'd like to say if we have common courtesy, to email somebody, send a text, or call somebody. We do have a text group between all of us, the council members, so I will respond to that tonight, to make sure you all have my phone number. So, if you have any questions, issues, concerns, anytime throughout the month, please, reach out to me anytime. I'm here at City Hall every day, so please, if that doesn't work, give me a call on my cell phone. So, I will respond to that, that group tonight, so you have that information. But other than that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second. Second, Ms. McMillan, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.